Call please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Reel is in route, I believe, but not here yet. District two, Councilman Pastor.
Present.
District three, Councilman Latham.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilwoman Giles.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Please join me in prayer. Lord, we ask for a special blessing and guidance over our council and our meeting tonight. We also ask for a special blessing over all our city staff and workers and all our residents of our community. We pray for an end to the threat of the coronavirus as it has affected many people in many countries. Amen.
Amen.
Shirley, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have a public hearing. It's on the Alternative Expenditure Limitation Home Rule Ballot Measured Proposition 406. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. And do we have any presentation by staff?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we start our public process for our home rule question, which will be on the primary election ballot this fall. So we have some information to present to the public and council. Okay? In 1980, Arizona voters approved a tax reform package that placed an expenditure limitation on cities and towns. This legislation, however, also allows local voters to approve an exception to the state imposed expenditure limitation in their city or town known as home rule. Under the state imposed expenditure limitation, cities or towns expenditures are limited based on a 1979-1980 expenditure expenditures that are adjusted by population growth and cost of living between 1978 and 2019. Under the state imposed expenditure limitation, the city of Globe may only spend a certain amount of funds regardless of the city's revenue or individual needs. Its budget is limited by the state imposed ceiling. This year, the state has set the preliminary fiscal year ending 2021 expenditure limitation for the city of Globe at $8.7 million. Under the home rule option, the city of Globe may determine its own expenditures based on its budget. The current 2019-2020 budget for the city of Globe is $27 million. Home rule may be referred to our voters by affirmative vote, two-thirds vote by council. Home rule will be Proposition Number 406 on the August 4th preliminary primary ballot. A yes vote will extend the city's council, the city council's ability to set the budget, thereby determining the alternative expenditure limitation for the city of Globe for the next four years. That would be '21, '22 through fiscal year '24, '25. The city will be required to hold another home rule option in four years. A no vote will place the city under the state imposed expenditure formula and will result in a reduction in budget and service cuts for at least the next two years. The city would be eligible to hold another home rule election in 2022. Reason cities and towns choose the home rule option. The 1980 formula projected growth but did not take into consideration additional transportation funds, additional federal funds, growth of the public safety personnel retirement system, and expansion of accepted cities and town services. The election process. Tonight will be our first public hearing. We're required to have two, so we'll have our next public hearing on March the 24th. At that time, council will convene into a special meeting and approve the proposal, and that will move it forward to the primary election. Monday, April 6th, we will submit our proposal to the Auditor General and wait for any comments. We will prepare a publicity pamphlet that will also go before the Auditor General, and those will be mailed out to our electors July, about July 6th. Mail ballots are mailed out to the city of Globe electors on Friday, July 24th, and our primary election will be August the 4th, which is a Tuesday. So the public pamphlets will be mailed to all registered voters early in July, informing voters through the resolution that council will pass on the 24th, that the mayor and council find it necessary to extend the alternative expenditure limitation equal to the total amount of budgeted expenditures and expenses as appears on the annual budget as adopted by the council for each of the four fiscal years immediately following the adoption of the home rule. The city of Globe seeks voters' approval to adopt a home rule option for the next four years, beginning in fiscal year 2021 through the 20, through 2022. Historically, local voters has passed the home rule option since 1982 when it started. So. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions, Rashida. Fernando?
I got a couple. First of all, I don't know if everybody knows this, but cities cannot spend money unless they actually budget it. So our budget includes basically a lot of leeway just in case we're able to secure grant or other funding, because if it's not budgeted, we can't legally spend it. So our budget is much bigger than what we actually spend, right? The other thing I have a question about is, does that include our enterprise fund? Because I would think that the enterprise fund would be a separate account. Do you know?
I don't know the history on whether they plan to include that, but we have the power to create a utility budget in what they call an enterprise fund, which is meaning an enterprise fund is something that's not funded by tax dollars but by fees collected. And, but that needs to be wrapped up in our whole budget. And that, I think traditionally, we didn't put on the list of things that they didn't think about back then, and I don't know the exact mechanics, but that is another thing that makes us above and beyond that 1980 projection of costs. But currently, if this does pass, we will be able to collect and budget for the enterprise fund. So it's real, that's real important, so that would be, that would suffer.
Shirley?
I just have a comment on the, on the budget amount. There's, there's things that are in that amount, like the $3 million grant that we got from the state to pay for Connie's Bridge, and there's other large amounts. So I wish we had that much money. We'd have a new asphalt on every road, but it's not the case.
And actually, Paul, 27 million reflects our budget, but our operations budget is what, is that around 13, 14 million?
No, our, our straight-up operation budget, not including enterprise fund, is about 10 million.
10 million.
And that's based on ongoing collection of sales tax, state shared tax, property tax, fees, and different things. So the enterprise is about another, another five, and then various excise and things like that. But our straight-up operational, which is what they're talking about, is only, I think, 9.8 last time, and we're hoping it'll hit 10 this time.
So if home rule doesn't pass, we can't even meet our operations budget, we're going to be limited to?
No, well, we'd have to use our operations budget to cover everything else. And this would be the conundrum. It's not like we wouldn't, we would have the money, we just wouldn't have the legal authority to expend the money. And so we'd be sitting around with, with all this, you know, this, these funds, but we wouldn't be able to utilize them. And it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, something that happened, I think, when, there's different things that they put in the ballot trying to control the state, trying to control rampant spending, what they perceive as rampant spending with the cities. We're not guilty of rampant spending in the city of Globe, but there are many, many other cities have, have to, have to accept and deal with this. I think the biggest difference is just the time lag from 1980 to 2000, it's 40 years ago. And things have changed, and how cities deliver services, and where we can get money, and how we spend it is different. So it's so important, but it allows the voters to check up and see what's going on. We just hope that everybody realizes it's a budgetary requirement as part of our structure. It's not a tax increase. This is not creating new taxes. This is allowing us to spend the taxes, the funds that we have.
And this never failed since the beginning of it, since?
In Globe, I do not believe it has.
Never has, so it's always been passed, which is good.
I think, because we have a highly educated voter population that understands that this is what it is, it's, it's just a mechanism that we were required to do every four years to make sure that we can, we're fully authorized to spend our budget. And, and just so, just for the record, we were required, unlike other government agencies, we are required to have a balanced, balanced budget. We cannot spend more than we take in.
Any comments? Open it up for any public comment, and any public want any, have any comments on the public hearing item of the home rule. Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open up our regular meeting then. And we'll start with a summary of current events, and we'll start with Mike on the end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot going on, but I did attend Resolution Copper had an update on their processes and operations on what's going on over at the Superior Site. They're still probably another 15 years down the road before they get into full production, but everything's moving pretty good, and they've opened, they've gotten down to 5,000 feet on the number nine shaft, I believe it is, yeah. The number nine, which is the old shaft. Back when I was a supervisor, I went down 10, and nine was like about 2,500 feet deep, and there was water in it, and they've been pumping water, and they're actually making some pretty good progress, and they're pleased with where they're at. So it's pretty interesting, short update, and the food was good, thanks to John Wong, so. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. I recently attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they had a couple of dates they wanted to make sure the public knew about, the 20th, the mixer and the grand expansion of Three Manor. April 25th, they're having a Dapper event downtown, and May 1st is their Chamber camaraderie. They have a cowboy thing camaraderie this year, so that's pretty exciting. And they have a sponsored event by the county, it's a census count event at the Chamber March 1st, and lunch will be provided at the Chamber.
That's all?
Oh, I'm sorry, March 18th.
March 18th, yeah, I thought that was from 11 to 1, isn't that when they're?
Yeah.
Yeah, you come in and get on census, and they give you, they're having pizza there.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Mike?
I just have a few things tonight, Mayor. First of all, a reminder that baseball season has started. Globe High School's in rear form, and they're, they've been playing now for about four weeks already. So if you get a chance, go down there and check out the field. Coach Caston had to spend a lot of time getting the field over there looking really sharp and pristine, so go support the kids out there playing baseball. And then just another reminder, March 27th is our next old cemetery cleanup. That's on a Friday. So what we're gonna do is just extend what we've done last month and continue that section that we did do and continue to move on forward. We're gonna try to have one more after this, so it'll probably be end of April or so, and then we'll probably take a small break and then continue on. But if anybody would like to volunteer and sign up, you can get ahold of me or Supervisor Woody Klein, and we'll give you all the details that you would, you know, need to have to help us. Last time, we had about 75 people out there cleaning, so it's a real good deal. It looks sharp, so if you get a chance, definitely give me a call or come see me. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Fernando?
I have a couple announcements. One is, my town in Miami is gonna have a community cleanup on Sat, this Saturday, March 14th. I think I'm gonna show up about 9:00, but I'm not sure exactly what time they're gonna start. But they asked the Miami Rotary Club to be there to, to provide hot dogs, sodas, and chips, and water. It'll be free to all the volunteers or whoever shows up, and they're also gonna encourage you to participate in the census at that time. So if you really don't know what to do or how to do it, but you know you want to be counted because that's your civic duty, they'll actually have people there with computers that can help you complete your census. And so come on out and get a hot dog and enjoy camaraderie and help us clean up the community. On March 27th, our Cobra Valley Youth Club will be hosting, well, on behalf of the Cobra Valley Youth Club, Enja and Dan are gonna have the comedy night. Tickets are $25, it includes food, one drink, where it's gonna be five comedians that will be there that night. It is adult humor, but it should be a great night, and all the proceeds are going to go help the Cobra Valley Youth Club, so, so support the kids and come out and have a fun night. And that's also March 27th, so go clean up the cemetery, and then come clean up, and then come back and enjoy the, please clean up and then come to the comedy night. Thank you.
Fernando, on that cleanup, where's that at? Is, where are they gonna meet at, and what's the time? Thank you. Shirley?
I have a few things. First of all, I was at the new dog park the other day, and the Ramadas are all completed, the fencing's installed, the irrigation work is going on as we speak, so many thanks to our Public Works guys for getting all that done. It really looks nice up there. Then we have a house on Hackney that was in absolutely deplorable condition. It was a known drug activity, activity area. I would see this going on as I walked by all the time. Thanks to our code enforcement department, it is now a very nice-looking house that has all been freshly cleaned, painted, it looks beautiful, and it is for rent. So it is now going to contribute to our community instead of taking away from it. So thank you, code enforcement. And then the Easter parade is also gonna happen in April, that's on Saturday, April 11th, and it will be from 9:30 to 10:00 is check-in at the depot, and then the parade actually starts at 10:00. And it's a lot more than a parade, it's really for kids. There's a lot of activities for the kids after the parade, and dogs are welcome. And speaking of dogs, the Dapper Days, they're gonna have a dog stroll, this will be the first year we're doing a dog stroll. And so what that means is you can put costumes on your doggies, and we're gonna do a long broad, and there'll be a costume contest, and prizes for the dogs, and treats for the dogs, and what have you. So that, that'll be a cool thing. And then I would like to mention that the numbers at Bechbogawa have really significantly increased. That, that goes to show what a great tourism tool that facility is. And I can't stress enough how well-done it is. It is spotlessly clean every time I go there. It doesn't matter if it's on a busy weekend or on a Monday, it's spotlessly clean. The people are friendly and smiling, and it is also dog-friendly. That, that is a great facility we have, it's really an asset to our city. And another asset to our city is Effie over at the library. I don't know if you all know Effie, but she has probably only been there about a year or so. She always has a smile on her face, just greets people and tries to be really helpful, and I just thought she should get acknowledged for that. And while we're acknowledging people, let's talk about some Public Works guys. So again, I was walking, I was walking through town, and there's four that I would like to call. So again, I was walking, I was walking through town, and there's four that I would like to call out because they were just, these are exemplary employees. So Gabe Andrade has been here for years. Christopher Beheranos, I'm guessing six or eight months? Okay. Anthony and Bruce are both fairly new. But they were all, they were all out there on Broad Street, they were weed-eating, they were blowing, they were just, and again, smiles on their faces, you know, speaking to people, picking up trash. It's a really good representation of our workforce to have fellows like that that just are so, so, they enjoy their job, and they're doing it well. And then also, I would like to mention Martine, who is really only a couple of weeks, correct? Our Blue Steak, yeah, he, I didn't know Martine, but there was some work being done in my neighborhood, and I stopped to speak with him. And that, there was a good hire there because that dude knows his business. He really does. He's, he's going to really prove to be an asset to the city as well. And so then lastly, I just want to talk about our Judge Pearlman's wife, Tina. So if Judge Pearlman's our magistrate here, and he's a great guy, but he's married to Tina, who moved from Finland to the American West to become a cowboy. That is a true story. And if anybody's ever met Tina, you'd say, yep, she could do it. But instead, she decided to become a pilot. Well, that was well and good, so for 20 years, she's been a pilot for American Airlines. And then about a year ago, she decided that she didn't want to fly just regular planes with, you know, 250 people in them. She wanted to be a pilot of jumbo jets. And so she did that. So she went to school, she now does transatlantic flights. She just got in from Paris yesterday. Amazing, amazing, what an amazing individual. And she, again, what great assets to our community the Pearlmans are. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Charlene. I have a couple of things. I attended the Walk for Hope event this weekend, and again, that was again to bring out awareness of the addiction problem, the drug issues that we have in our community, also the suicides, and the lack of resources that we really have nationwide or statewide, and even our community. We deal with that, I know fire and police deal with that on a regular basis, where people are trying to get help out there, whether it's mental issues, drug issues, and it's really, we have a lack of resources, so we really need funding. And that leads to why we're wearing shirts, our census is coming up. It's important that we push it, make sure that everybody gets online, applies on phone, or mails it in, and make sure that we get, we get the count that we need in order to provide a lot of these resources that are there in this poster that's in front. It kicks off March 12th, Thursday, so it'll go live, and I think it'll go for three months. You'll get the invitation by mail, if you don't fill it out and don't respond in any manner, they'll come to you. But there's going to be many events that are going to be held. Chamber is one of them, the library's holding a lot of them, City Hall has some. We'll be pushing census very hard. Our count didn't increase in 2010, and whatever we get in 2020 is going to live with us for another 10 years. We aren't going to get an increase, and that's state shared revenues, and that, those revenues are really important to us. $3,000 a person per year, household. That's a lot of money if you count, you can count from infant to the elder. If somebody's living with you, even if they're not a family member, you can count them within your household. So just make sure that you promote it within the schools, within your workplace, your home, and make sure that we get that count for Globe. Not only Globe, Globe Miami, and Hilo County, because we all count in, because if we don't get it, it's going to go somewhere else.
Can we count dogs and rabbits?
I wish we could. Can we just, we want to promote it, so can we get a picture just, we'll stand here, and so as a council, we want to promote the census start date for the 12th. And we'll just stand here, and we'll have the banner in front.
You want to stay up there and then?
Yeah, we'll stay up there, and we'll get the.
Okay, yeah, hurry before Freddie gets here without a shirt.
Yeah.
I don't like t-shirts. I don't wear t-shirts, but the mayor asked me to, so I conceded.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlene, for wearing it.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Rios did text me, he is in transit, he's on his way, but he's running late, and apologies, he should be here. Yes, the census is so important. You know, a lot of, a lot of communities talk about census as to count the growth in their community. We don't have a lot of growth, but we know we have people out there that have fallen through the cracks. And, you know, for every, all the services we need to provide, we, we all pay tax dollars that go through the system, and then they're redistributed back to us, and so we are bringing our fair share of that money back to Globe. Like you say, if we don't, if we're not counted, somebody else can get the money that we pay. And so that's why it's so important. The, I know that the, so Adria is watching from home, and she texted me to remind me that the library is doing a census power hour week with free light, breakfast, and computers available to help people do the census starting March 23rd. So that'd be from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, starting on March 23rd. You can come in, get something to eat, and they'll help you get online, and for all those people who are kind of computer-phobic, which I know I sometimes can be, we have a kiosk set up here in City Hall, so you can help there. And if you, if you know anybody else, I mean, it's a, it's a good conversation to say, hey, I am, I am very impressed. The people in Globe, I've never heard anybody say, you know, I have a problem with this, I'm afraid of this. Everybody, everybody I've talked to is like, yeah, soon when it's ready, we're going to be going for it. And I really think we'll get a strong count, because I think, again, I think the voters and the residents of Globe Miami and the Southern Hilo County understand that it's a simple thing, it's a way our, the structure of our system, and they're going to be counted, and we're going to have a good count, because it will last for those 10, those 10 days, 10 years.
I have a question. Were you texting on the dais?
No, she texted me, I did not respond.
We're not supposed to text on the dais according to our city manager, but then he said the texts weren't out loud in public.
Yes, but, and unfortunately, I'm not elected official, so I'm off the vote.
Ah, that doesn't count, that's not fair.
So.
He's got to answer always, he's always got to answer.
So the, what I was going to say, now you got me off track. Okay, we are having, the City Globe is having their own, our own cleanup. It'll be March 19th, 20th, and 21st. We'll have four dumpsters floating around, and I won't tell you how I know this, but, but I think they'll be at Nob Hill, grocery at Wells Fargo, Pinell Lumber, and Euclid Street.
Euclid and Gleason.
So that'll be good, so you can, you know, bring out your, your stuff, and let's get it out of here. We are having another cemetery cleanup, again, the 27th, 28th, which is sponsored, I faux-podged two weeks ago when talking about, this is Supervisor Woody Klein has been backing this, and I know Tim Humphrey is in the audience, and I gave a shout-out to Tim, who supports this. But I give credit where credit is due, and the cemetery cleanup is an event being promoted by Supervisor Woody Klein and our Vice Mayor, Mike Stapleton. So just wanted to get, set the record straight, and get that on the record. Mr. Mayor, the last thing we talked about, and this is not the best news, HP 2705 is the blight bill that was going to give us some more teeth and how to do blight. When we went down, I think, a couple times, and we've worked on this bill and testified in the way of some more teeth. Right now, it is being held up in what they call the Rules Committee. The Rules Committee is simply a committee that says, is it constitutional? That's all the question they're supposed to look at. And, but it has to be given that, it went through the government committee and was supported coming out of there. Anthony Kern, Representative District 20 out of Glendale, is the Chair of the Rules Committee. And for whatever reason, he is refusing to put that on the agenda. And that deprives anyone from having a chance to vote on that. Okay, I think the, it's been stuck there. I talked to the league, I think there's maybe a less than 5% chance that it might get. The only way to get this out of there would be to actually load it onto a striker that's already been through rules, it gets real technical. There are some ways that we can get this bill going again, and I don't know if it will. I would, I would not recommend that you talk to Representative Kern, but our Representatives, Representative Cook, Representative Shope, and Senator Pratt, if they can find a way to get this and find a vehicle, which is a bill that's made it so far through rules, and then they overlay this on top. But, you know, it takes two to three years to get a bill through legislature. This is our first try, we're trying on that, but it would be, something would be helpful to us. So I just wanted to give you a quick update, we had talked about that today. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that's all I have for you.
So I have a comment on that last item. I disagree, I think every elected official should be contacting this man. I mean, if he's the holdup, he needs to hear from all of us that we don't, this is imperative to our community. How are we going to get the tools in our toolbox that we need?
And so that's K E R N, Kern? Anthony Kern, Representative District 20, okay.
We need to encourage all elected people to contact him.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Members of Council.
Thank you. So first, we go to our first community call to the public, and this is a time any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on this agenda may do so at this time. Comments will be addressed to the council as a whole public body. Council is prohibited from responding to any comments, but may direct staff to follow up. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please complete a request to speak card located at the rear of the council chamber and turn it in to our clerk. This is also a time if anybody's desiring to speak on a matter that is scheduled on the agenda, and you can turn in a speak to, a speak card to our clerk also, and in that time, we can respond to you if it's on the agenda. And we have one for schedule, but we don't have any call to the public? So we'll go to special presentations. An item 4A is AmeriCorps Vista Proclamation, and I'll read the proclamation, and do we have somebody here that's going to accept that proclamation? So AmeriCorps Week 2020 Merrill Proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character, and throughout our history, citizens have stepped up to meet our challenges by volunteering in their communities. And whereas AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps provides opportunity for nearly 75,000 Americans to serve their country through an intensive commitment to services at nonprofits, schools, public agenda, public agencies, and community and health face base across the country. And whereas AmeriCorps enriches the lives of its members, building habits that create engaged citizens who are active participants in civic matters affecting their communities long after their service terms are completed. And whereas AmeriCorps members encourage collaboration and partnership, leveraging millions of volunteers in service and acquiring the support of business partners to increase the effectiveness of their initiatives. And whereas Globe, Rachel Marsh helped to meet local needs at the Cobra Valley Youth Club in Globe through improving club sustainability, meeting family needs, and long-term viability in the community. Whereas in exchange for their service, AmeriCorps members develop valuable work skills, earn money for continuing education, and strengthen the lives of their families, communities, and the Arizonas as a whole. Whereas AmeriCorps Week is the opportunity to recognize the dedication, commitment of more than 1 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps and their community partners, and to encourage more Americans to follow their footsteps in service. So therefore, be resolved that I O Gamaris, AmeriGlobe, Arizona, do hereby designate March 8th through the 14th, 2020, as AmeriCorps Week, and urge citizens to thank AmeriCorps members and alumni for their service, and to find their own ways to give back to their communities.
Thank you.
Hello, does this work?
Yes. Pull it towards you.
Hello, okay, sorry. So I've been here as an AmeriCorps Vista now for about almost seven months by the end of March. And it's been up and down, but I really have fallen in love with this community and what I get to do at Cobra Valley Youth Club. I am very, very proud of what I've done so far. So right now, for Cobra Valley Youth Club, we are really working on getting our meals started at the club. We have now a commercial kitchen, and we really want to utilize this. And so I really appreciate all your support, the city council and everything, especially Jesse Leatham and Fernando, there, and Matt, who is also here, and Veronica, so I'm a part of Rotary, the Miami Rotary as well. And they are on the board at the club. And so if it wasn't for, 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 for them and United Fund of Globe, I am very happy to be here and accept this proclamation. And I am, I'll be here until July, and I am trying very hard to find partnerships, as well as maybe, maybe finding some good, some good support, so that we can start really, really getting going for the summer program at Cobra Valley Youth Club. So thank you guys so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Item B, we have Cobra, yes, go ahead, Fernando.
I just want to give a shout-out to Robin, too. Robin is the coordinator for AmeriCorps. She gets all these, she finds candidates and matches them to opportunities. And it's an opportunity for Rachel to grow in her skills and put, you know, put to use all that she learned in college. And it helps communities that need the extra help. So you, thank you so much to both of you, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Fernando. Item B, we have Cobra Valley Regional Aquatic Board Update on the Aquatic Center project. Evelyn Vargas?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'd like to talk about where we're at with the Aquatic Center. And, you know, we started off five years ago. I wasn't on that original committee five years ago. Charlene, I love it.
I support.
We started five years ago, and after going through three years of trying to push a tax district through the Arizona State Legislature to no avail, we're at a point where we really need a facility for our communities. And, you know, the three years that we pushed for a tax district, it passed overwhelmingly in the Senate and then died in the House every single time. So it brought us to a point where we needed to reevaluate, was going through a tax district really the best option for the Aquatic Center? And through a lot of discussion, our members decided, this is something that we need to own as a community. We don't need the state to be involved in this, we need to own it. It's our community, it's our children, it's our elderly, it's every age range that you can imagine could use an aquatic center. So we need to own this project, you know, for economic development, for social development, for all those things that it could bring for, to our communities. I want to start off with, Councilwoman Giles is wearing a pair of goggles. And so on these goggles was attached a jump drive, and on this jump drive was our business plan. So 200 pages of information that we've put together over the past five years. And this isn't even all the information, this is probably the most pertinent information that has been given to all the council members a few days ago. Am I, oh. There we go. So the entire business plan is, is in this documentation. I want to start with the operation analysis overview, which is a summary of all the amenities for the Aquatic Center. Two diving wells, a couple of slides, a small splash area, eight lap lanes, 25 yards. So all the amenities is in this summary. The next piece of information on this business plan is the income expense projection overview. The next piece of information on this business plan is the income expense projection overview. And that is just a rundown of what our income would be, what our expenses would be, and what the difference is. And that's where we're going to get into a little more detail tonight. But the income would include the daily fees, the summer passes, the 10-day passes, what would we bring in from vending, all the income streams that we've identified. Expenses would include personnel, which is about 50%, more than 50% of the expenses would be personnel, and that would include one manager at a cost of about $62,000, which would include benefits. 14 other employees, and those combined would be over half of the expenses for the Aquatic The next is the income expense plan itself, and this is the detailed spreadsheet, which identifies all the expenses. How much is the chlorine? How much is the toilet paper? How much is, you know, just every line item that we could think of is in this plan. And all the council members, you have the detailed expense/income spreadsheet. The next part is the market analysis. And in the market analysis, this was a study done about three years ago from Breckenridge Group. And in that market analysis is, what is the anticipated number of swimmers we expect to have at the pool? What's the demographics? What's their expendable income? You know, what is the estimated use of the pool? How many people will purchase 10-day passes? How many people will purchase, you know, the six-month pass, et cetera? So it's a very detailed market analysis. The site determination, it was completed by the Breckenridge Group also. And so in that study, on your jump drive, it explains how we come up with a site that was chosen. You know, it's just, it wasn't random. It was very detailed. Some of the qualifications or determinant factors were, is it accessible? Is it visible? Is it walkable? All those things. Does it have a highway presence so people passing through our community can see what we value? The capital construction action plan, that is for Phase 2. How are we going to raise the capital to build this swimming facility? $7 million is what we're looking at if we build the type of pool that we're looking at. The next piece of documentation in that business plan is the 501(c)(3) documentation. The Cobra Valley Regional Aquatic Center is a 501(c)(3) entity. We can accept donations, so any donations made towards this project are tax deductible. I foresee the 501(c)(3) being used through a foundation for the Aquatic Center and maybe paying for passes where maybe low-income families can't pay for. So it'd be made up of members who want to go out and raise funds and help support maybe those lower-income families, so they'll have a chance to enjoy the pool, too. The next piece of information is the conceptual site plan example from the town of Florence. And I do have some pictures around here from the town of Florence. This is one example, and I just love this picture. It shows people interacting. You see all the human contact here, moms and children, and, you know, you don't see any cell phones in this picture. You know, people are engaged with each other and having a good time. The next piece is the architect rendering of this pool, so all the detailed plans from the architects themselves. We don't want to build an exact replica of the Florence Pool, but it has all the amenities that we've designated in our operations analysis overview. So all the amenities that the Florence Pool has, those are the amenities we want to include, but maybe design the pool a little bit different. And the last piece of documentation is the community support. You know, we didn't do a lot of community support in high-traffic areas. We had some pictures and a box set up at the hospital for a couple of months. We had, I think, at the Globe Library, a couple of places here in the city of Globe, somewhere. In the town of Miami, we also had a couple of boxes set up, one at the library, one at the Town Hall. And if you get a chance, we put all of those responses on a spreadsheet. Incredible responses from our community, so. What I want to go through, we'll just put it up there. We're looking at expenditures of $646,638. Income is estimated at $203,000. This gives us a shortfall of $443,569. The shortfall is what we're coming to the town of Miami, the city of Globe, and the county to support. There's not an aquatic center in the state of Arizona that makes a profit. Every aquatic center in the state of Arizona is subsidized by tax dollars. So it's not anything new to see these kind of numbers up there. There were a few ideas that were thrown out that, you know, maybe company ABC would like to help support the M&amp;O cost for five years at $10,000, for example, per year. Their name goes up on a board for five years, and their money directly goes to help support the M&amp;O, which would offset what the city, town, and county are paying. So there's a lot of ideas out there that we can use to help offset the maintenance and operation. So then we get down to the population and the contribution. These numbers were based on population from the 2010 census. So if we go by population, Globe would be asked to put in $203,000, almost $204,000. Miami is looking at almost $50,000. Southern Hila County would be looking at $190,000, or, yeah, about $190,000. And added up together, this would cover the shortfall for the Aquatic Center.
Freddie, you got a question?
No.
This shortfall is, this is your annual prediction, correct?
Yes, annual. And just to run through some pictures, I'm not sure if everyone can see all the pictures. Town of Florence, and we've been working a lot with the town of Florence, they did have in that square or that rectangle pool, they built the Aquatic Center, they average over 275 kids per day now. We have so many people that leave our community for this kind of recreation every day. I have had the opportunity to talk to so many people. There were three ladies, elderly ladies, who came up to me to ask me how the Aquatic Center project was going. And they said, we really need somewhere to swim. Every summer, we stay at least two nights in a local hotel just to use the pool. We call this one Cannonball. Two slides, lap lanes, diving well over to the left. Night swimming, Florence does a lot of night swimming activities. You know, their swim teams often compete at night. Here's our very own CCYS Piranha Swim Team from last year. And I have to say, you know, I've heard a lot of talk, I talk a lot about this pool, but people will say about the community pool and the Hot Stetter Pool, well, if they would have taken a better care of their facility, we would still have facilities. The life expectancy of a pool is about 30 years. I think Globe and Miami have really outdid themselves in maintaining their community pools, because we're looking at well over 40 years probably with both pools. So I commend everyone that has taken care of those facilities over the years. Water aerobics, aquatic physical therapy. Because I work at the hospital, you know, the physical therapy personnel always come over. When are we going to get this aquatic center? We have about 60 people that can use this facility today, because when you're on non-weight-bearing conditions, you know, you can't exercise like you normally do. You need some buoyancy. You need the water therapy. So together, we can own this project and make our communities thrive. Any questions?
Jessie.
Evelyn, this is an estimation. If this estimation falls shorter than this, how do you plan to capture those shortfalls outside of this estimation?
Those estimations are inclusive. They're all, you know, if you take a look at the detailed income expense plan, we have listed line by line by line what all the expenses are and what all of revenue is projected to be.
I guess I'm asking if something goes askew in those line items that you have, where's that money coming from?
Okay.
Do you have contingency funds set aside then?
We have, we'll start off with a capital, kind of like a capital replacement fund, $15,000 in the first year, and that's what's included in the income expense plan. So it's $15,000. The next year, it'll be another $15,000. I think the third year, we earmark $30,000, just because the pool will probably be under a lot of warranties for the first couple of years. So we'll bank that money just in case year three or four, a pump goes out, for example. So, yeah, that's built into the budget.
Fernando?
What's the operation? It won't be year-round, right?
The operation would be six months. This is all based on May through October.
Okay, which is a lot longer than what we do now.
Yes. I think the swim season, if there's any piranhas out here. Leslie, it ends in October?
Oh, gosh.
No.
We have a certain period in May if we're lucky, the pool is in working condition. And our first week is typically the first week of June, and then finish the end of, like, the third week of July.
Okay.
We've got swim teams all around, swim almost 10 months out of the year. So we've got seven weeks.
Yeah. And I think we're looking, we were also looking at the swim teams from high schools also, I think, go into October.
They're October early, no?
Yeah, okay.
So will the pool be heated?
Yes. This is numbers based on a heated pool.
Mike.
No question. Evelyn, what does Southern Hila County consist of? Because Globe and Miami are already in Southern Hila County.
Yeah.
Okay, are we going all the way to Hayden Winkelman?
Yes. That's inclusive of Southern Hila County.
Roosevelt and Tonal Basin?
I would have to defer that question to Joe Heatherly. He calculated those. Do you have an answer, Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pastor, I believe is when we did this, we were at Wheatfields. I don't think we went that much further. I think we tried to stay in the, kind of, the Globe and Miami school district areas, but I don't think we went all the way to Alto Tonto.
Okay. Not even Roosevelt?
I don't think so.
I would think if we had an aquatic center, we'd get some...
But we wouldn't turn them away.
Coming this way.
You'd hope so.
Okay, thank you.
Evelyn, I want to thank you and your committee for all the work you guys have done for the past couple of years. I know the hardships you've gone through, the legislature and everything, and it's been a tough road to get there. This is an option, you know, that can be looked at. And I've been to the one in Florence, and it's amazing. I've been to the one in Anthem, and that's even more amazing than this one in Florence is. And it's something our community needs, and we really need to look, take a hard look at it and to make sure that we can, you know, somehow, our community needs it. And I got a card from Mayor Daley. I don't know how long the Miami pool is even going to be working.
Mayor Gamaros, Vice Mayor Stapleton, Council. Last night, the town of Miami made a 10-year commitment on the funds that are required for this. I wish this was an action item for the council tonight. You look at the pictures, looks better than a square pool. Think about the handicap people, how things have changed in this area, this aging community. The way these pools are, there could just be like a beach entrance to go on in. Right now, I know the council's really in shock on the amount of money that could be put up, but even poor town of Miami loses between $50,000 and $60,000 a year on a Hot Stetter Pool. That was from last year. And that's a lot smaller size compared to what this is. And I don't have the numbers to how many kids come to our pool, but it starts off very slow. Some days, you can go down there and see as few as, less than five kids in there, but yet we're required by law to have so many lifeguards on duty and have a pool manager, the whole nine yards. So don't let the money overwhelm you. Since I've been on the council for 12 years, I know we've pumped in close to probably a half a million dollars in doing different repairs, and we've had, that's through the donation money that we got to with putting the new bottom in, rebar in it, putting new plumbing, putting new decks, got another diving board, and it's every year buying new pumps, this going out. I know, I don't know, I haven't heard the final study on your pool, but, you know, I think it's time to, this will go along with the plan from Hila County when they come up with the plan of Discover Hila County. It's a location, like Evelyn said, right by the highway. You got a shopping center right up the road where you can be renting bicycles and everything else that have a swimming pool, aquatic center. You already have a tunnel underneath the highway. They can go over to play golf or go over to the recreation center at the golf course area. They could get on quads and go up here to the Penale Mountains. I think it's a key location. I think the high schools could get a swimming team going or something like that, probably a joint team. And it's time to make this, as Mayor Gamaros and I've talked, this is one community. Mayor Gamaros was with me at the Hila County meeting, and it was pretty straightforward that the supervisor from Payson did not want Southern Hila, or Northern Hila County to have any funds down here, but I bet you a dollar that when we get that recreation center, our aquatic center, you'll have them coming down here from Payson instead of going down to Mesa. Don't let, just the main thing, don't let the cost seem so much. I know we have a lot of generous people here who'd like to donate and help bring down that $443,000 in the maintenance cost and operations cost, and I think that money, we can exceed that with the donors and what the municipalities are put in. But just look at the pictures, that could be our kids. You can see the hospital, again, is for the physical therapy, people have those kind of problems. And the pool's just the start, then we can get the baseball fields down there, and it's all in that center area in the middle of our community, you know. You know, city of Globe goes all the way down to Miami High School, so we don't want to hear it's in Miami. You know, they just want to give us that back, but, you know, give us the revenue with it, but it's not going to happen. But we're one community, and we passed it. Mayor Gamaros was in the meeting at the county as well, giving the support of the Globe, but we're here. Evelyn's been working hard, the committees working hard. Paul and Joe both have put all their efforts into it. Again, we don't want the state to have any part of it. Let's take ownership. But, you know, I don't think this is a gamble. This could be a big reward for our community. And again, what will this do is show people, maybe more people will come up here and want to live, because they see something like this, an aquatic center, not just a square swimming pool where the handicap people can't get in. So if we keep our pools... So if we keep our pools open, we're going to have to put a chair and all that stuff in. At our pool, there's another expense, and then more on your insurance, not having the proper equipment because ours outdated, but is, our pool has about two years left in the town of Miami, and if we don't get this is... I don't know if your pool would ever be open again, but we're not going to be able to continue pumping money into that. But thank you for your time tonight, Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Evelyn, your projection to build it is $7 million? Is that correct?
Yes, it's, actually, the town of Florence, five years ago, 2015, built their pool for $5.1 million. The projected estimate cost today is $5.6 million. So just to give a cushion, we put it at $7 million.
And then the committee feels they can raise that money to build a pool then? Or this is just for O&amp;M is what it is?
Yeah. And the, I guess the other point is, you know, I don't want to say this is going to cost the City of Globe. It's an investment. You know, you have to think about the return on the investment that you're making. You know, it's not a direct return from the pool because it runs in the red, but you think about the ripple effect and the hospital being able to recruit better doctors because the wives and the kids want to stay in the area because there are things to do and nice homes to live in, et cetera. And everything just drives each other. You know, we build homes, people move here, they love the area because there's an aquatic center, there's a lake, there's the mountains, there's a lot for them to do, which drives everything else, you know, more shopping, more family coming and using our, you know, family coming to visit, staying in our hotels, for example. It drives the economy, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, Evelyn.
Hello.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work in this, and I agree with you. People do leave here to go down from the valley. I know, I've been to Lightning Chandler, Mesquite Grove. I think they charge like $2 a day per person, and you can bring in coolers and stuff, and people do go down there and stay in hotels. So if we have something like this, people would come up here and do the same thing and fill our hotels and our restaurants and everything else. So I think it'd be a great attraction for both Miami and Globe. I just want to thank you. I was on the, well, I was on the committee, but when you guys started this five years ago, I was with you and Mayor Wheeler at the time, going over these numbers and stuff, so thank you.
I was in my mid-50s back then. I'm pushing my 60s, so we got to get this done because I would love to go off the diving board myself.
I just want to thank you, Evelyn. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Evelyn, when you met with the county, you pretty much, this presentation, we were talking about this, their response was that...
Yeah, we did meet with the county in July of 2019. Very positive response, you know, for the most part. At the end of the presentation, James Menlove wanted a business plan, and so we put this business plan together for him. We met with James Menlove about six weeks ago and went through all this information with him. He was very impressed with the project. He had a very positive response to all the information that we presented to him, and he said the county would like to pay for an economic develop impact study, an economic impact study, just to see the ROI that this would bring to the community. He said that would probably have a little more teeth with the supervisors to get them on board, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, as you know, items need to come twice to council. We started with the presentation. I believe that there's details we've worked out, at least on what the commitment, I know there was a, in an agendized meeting, a verbal commitment by the Town Council of Miami. I believe that it would be, we would need to bring this back, and the timing, we're so close to our budget cycle. I think having this come back and be included, so talking about this after we see our budget projections, our revenue projections, you know, what our needs are, what our money will have to work with, I mean, I think that would be a, my recommendation as an outcome from this is to ask that this be returned or discussed once we know more about this budget cycle.
Evelyn, what do you anticipate that you're able to raise enough funds to build? I mean, what's the timeframe? Is it a year, five years? When do we think that would be?
In our, in our capital construction, well, our first step is to get a commitment from Miami Globe County, and they get together, maybe an IGA, and say, yes, we're committed. And then we can go out and start raising that capital. Without that, I don't think people would be committed enough to say, yes, I want to donate $500,000. We need, they need to know that the maintenance and operations is going to be covered. So in the capital construction plan, we gave ourselves two years. We hope we raise $7 million sooner than two years, but there is some detail, it's still a work in progress, the capital construction plan, but you know, on that plan, we have naming rights, we have giving walls, we have sidewalk projects, just everything, Kool-Aid sales, I mean, or popcorn sales, you know. We want everyone invested and to be able to say, we helped build the pool, you know, because when they have ownership, they take care of it. You know, I would love to see High Desert and, you know, Charles Beherano Middle Elementary School have little sales, and that way the children know this is their pool.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a clarification, we have moved beyond the legislative, legislative action was to set up a special taxing district because this committee has been doggedly wanting to make sure that if we're going to, if it's going to be built, it needs to be funded, it needs to be maintained. That special taxing district that we looked at, that we tried and three years failed, was that. This option right now does not require a vote of the people. We're not creating a secondary property tax. Just for clarification, that we, you know, we have moved off of that recommendation and that attempt. So just for clarity for anybody who's thinking about this, this is never, the plan we're talking about now is not to go to vote of the people, but to seek support from the three entities for operational.
And obviously, you need commitment from all three entities in order to move forward. You won't move yet.
Yes.
Fernando?
Mayor, I'd move that we bring it back for possible council action at the next meeting.
Second.
Do you want to go at the next meeting?
Well, I'm open.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, I would ask that we, we should be doing revenue projections in April, and so if I would say not the next meeting, but the, as part of the budget process, or we can do it the next meeting.
Sure.
And the commitment we make is, we're looking at, I think Miami did a 10-year, is that what we're looking at?
It is, the council's pleasure is how to do the commitment. I do believe you would need to have something in writing to do that. I don't, I don't know that anybody would say, I mean, you could, I was at the Miami meeting, and there was strong vocal support from the Town Council, and I don't know if Mayor Dally wants to speak to. Are you intending to go back with written documentation on this, or?
Right, we're in the middle of our, we started our budgeting process, and we went again and put the line item in there with it, and we're going to, we'll have the vote, the actual agreement, you know, once it's in the budget process, but it's, our council was, everyone was for it, so there, it's not going to be a chance, and the town manager's just going to shuffle the numbers because that, for us, it was a $50,000 investment, or we can go higher than that because whatever our last, how much we put into the pool every year, so it might be more than the $49,000 required, but that's just a small number for where we're going to come out of it. But the town has given the verbal commitment, we're going to have to put it on paper, that our town attorney's going to be drafting up, but is, the commitment was there, and yes, we'll have the formal vote when we sign that letter, but it's, it's a, you could call it a done deal.
Mayor Dally, what's your current O&amp;M that you do right now?
I don't, I don't have those numbers. I thought Mr. Heatherly would be here tonight.
It's probably higher than the $49,000 that you spent on it right now.
Joe said that was close to $60,000 and stuff.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, so we would, we would not, and Evelyn, I mean, I don't see us having expenditure in the 2021 budget cycle because this money would only be for operation after its construction, but it would be the commitment from the council that when it is constructed, that the council at that time would make that there. And so you have the, what you would be doing is locking in with this council that when, in the two years when this comes forward, and we need it in the third year, that that council would be required to budget that into the budget. And so, I mean, and it, but we could show a trend as where we are in our revenues and, you know, and so you can kind of see where we're going on our budget and balance that out about making that commitment. But it would be, again, it would be asking for a written commitment that would be binding to the point, although we'd have to do some more research on exactly how binding that would be, but I, but I believe that if this council made a commitment in writing, that it would stand by that commitment.
I truly believe it deserves serious consideration because we do need some kind of, we do need a swimming pool aquatic center. You know, I have grandkids that use, utilize Anthem and Florence facilities and the programs that go there. I believe we truly need that, and with Miami, their failing system, what are kids going to do? We truly need to take a hard look at, you know, this proposal or our projections and any other possibilities that we have at this point.
Mayor, I would also argue that if we don't give our kids opportunities to do something constructive and positive, then they'll find other things to do which also cost us money. And so I'd rather spend the money on something that's productive, that contributes to the quality of life for the whole community than to clean up messes that maybe we could prevent.
And I think there was projections out there about, you know, where it leads to crime, and you know, you pay it in the courts, and you, it costs you eventually, community, you bet.
Freddie?
Thank you. Evelyn, this analysis that you provided or this estimated cost, is there a matrix that you can use or that is being anticipated for annual cost, rising cost as time goes on, or is this locked in? I just got, I can't believe that the O&amp;Ms are going to maybe equal throughout the next four or five years because things change, you know, chemicals cost, you know, go up and things like that, so.
I was just going to say water.
Well, that does go up because it does cost to maintain quality water. So, you know, there are costs, there are factors that drive costs up. So is this like a, is there a percentage, 2% per year? Is there any kind of matrix that's being?
We didn't project it out any further, but all these costs, anticipated expenses are on the high end, so we did estimate on the very high end. And that way, if, you know, year one, we start and it's lower, it's a bonus for us. This is also contingent, you know, the paperwork might read contingent upon the raising of X amount, $7 million. If we don't raise $7 million and we only raise $4 million, we're going to build a $4 million pool, you know. Our community cannot wait anymore. So, you know, in that case, these costs would be a lot lower. So we've estimated on the high end.
I guess my last question or comment, you mentioned something about a jump drive that was available?
Yes. It was attached to some goggles.
It would have been in your box.
Oh, okay, yeah. I didn't get a packet out, that's what I'm saying. All right, thank you. All right, I just wanted to know where to find it.
And Evelyn, the longer that is that we wait on construction of a pool, the costs are going to go up. It's not going to be 5.1 million, it's going to be 6.1 million, whatever the percentage growth is for construction in the next year or two, every year it goes up. So we need to keep that in mind also.
Just to reiterate, the Florence pool in five years went up a half a million dollars in construction cost.
So we have a motion and a second. What was the motion again?
To bring it back for further action.
And further action, next meeting, or do we receive our projection?
I think, I think as part of, I would like to, my recommendation would be as part of the budget process.
And those projections, where we would get in April?
Yeah, we'll start with, we'll start with April and lay that out, the projections, then the CIP, and then insurance, PSPRS, and it'll be mixed in. But it would be, I think, I think the key information would be our revenue projections and our fund balance, looking at fund balance, looking at revenue projections, and then look, see where our PSPRS costs are because that's what kind of chokes us.
Right.
So, but I would believe that by first meeting in May, we would probably have a handle on that.
So I would amend my motion to make it part of the budget process then.
Okay. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion pass.
Thank you very much. I am going to leave this hard copy with Shelley. I do have one for the town of Miami, I just forgot to bring it last night, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Evelyn, for your work. So we have item C. We have Danny Trammell will present 11 department update, 11 minutes for the informational
Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me remind you, this is unfiltered. I don't know what he's going to say. Department one, I was trying to figure out how to fill 11 minutes, and I guarantee I probably won't, so I'm just going to kind of give you a state of the department from my point of view. Basically, the last fiscal year, it's been a whole series of upgrading old stuff, replacing old stuff, trying to make the IT infrastructure of the city new. A lot of the stuff on here is aging, unmanaged. Security risks is what I saw pretty much everywhere I looked in the city when it came to what IT was. I know Paul's very big on worrying about liability. A lot of the technology we had here, or lack of technology we had here, is a liability in case we were ever to be a victim of an attack, and so I've been trying to mitigate that risk. A lot of this might, a lot of the places I'm looking at spending may not seem to have a direct effect on the security of the city's data infrastructure, but anywhere you have a weak link, it's an attack vector for anyone that ever wanted to do something malicious, whether it be a targeted attack or a curious kid that found out about computers. So what I've been doing is just basically trying to bring the technology of the city up into the, you know, to the, you know, modern times. This fiscal year, I've replaced approximately 15 computers to get rid of some of our aging computers that were six, seven, eight years old. Some users had need for a newer computer that weren't quite as old, and I've been able to repurpose a lot of their hardware to replace, you know, replace an eight-year-old computer with a three-year-old computer and give someone else a brand new one instead of the three-year-old. I've replaced a lot of the network infrastructure, or am planning to do so, so that we can connect all of our sites together to have centralized management for risk mitigation and access to data. For example, right now, Public Works, Wastewater Site, Cutter Wells, Apech Bagawa, they're all just standalone sites. They have computers connected to a cable modem just like you would have at home, and then they have access to the internet. There is no, no real filter between those computers and the internet. When we get a citywide network, I'll be able to manage antivirus updates, access troubleshooting, I mean, all sorts of things from a central console. There will be central security policies that all computers will apply to. It'll just make everything a lot more secure. The other point it'll make, instead of having those computers at Public Works, Cutter Wells, Wastewater, go from that computer to the cable modem out to the wild, wild internet, it'll come all through one central point, which is going to be the data center, which is going to be at the basement of the police department. That way, there's one... department. That way, there's one controlled source before they get out to the wild. It mitigates a lot of risk that way, protects the city, protects our users. It's, it's, it's good. I mean, I don't know the better, better word for it. It's just the, the best way to do things to keep, you know, if you keep attack vectors down to one bottleneck where it can be, everything can be protected at that one gateway instead of having so many different gateways to get in and for data to get out. The other things I've been doing that may not be security involved, but just to improve quality of life and, or for our users and to try to just bring everything up modern. For example, the police department has a brand new phone system. Their phone system was basically inoperable. They had two working telephones and it was all 30-year-old technology. They're now working on a brand new voice over IP system that's computer-based. Anything I want to manage has a web interface I go to. I don't have to call up someone who's, who's knowledgeable with, you know, ancient 80s technology, you know, to, to help me fix something when a phone goes down. Now it's something that I can, I literally go to a webpage to reconfigure a phone for the police department if I need to. It's, it's, it can all be done in-house. Nothing against Herb's phone service, but the reason we call him is because he's so knowledgeable in stuff that is that old. He's, he's been a great resource. I love the guy to death. But he's, he's trying to help me get rid of some of the old phone technology we have in the city, just because it's such a, it's, it's on a shoestring. If, if the phone system at City Hall were to go down, there's only a handful of people that know how to fix this older, older stuff. Even, even when Herb comes up here, he looks at some of the stuff and just goes, wow, still running. So the other thing I've done recently, this goes back to one of the security risks, is end user education. I'm sure all of you got the email, whether you knew it was from me or not, but recently, last couple of weeks, got an email telling you, hey, I'm doing an audit. Put in your password, put in your, your username, send it to me. Anyone that clicked on that, they're going to get a little bit of extra education over what's coming forward because it was, it was just a test. But that program that I've started was part of a, it was started by the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, but it was funded by a Department of Homeland Security grant to give states and municipalities end user education on how to, you know, protect yourself, don't click this, what to look for in case there's a fake email. So this was all at no cost to the city. It's something put on by the state through a federal grant, and they just reached out to all the smaller municipalities and see, to see who they felt was qualified for this grant or to be involved in this program. And I applied for it back in December and the ADOA put us on board and they're, we're finally starting to get that ball rolling to get this education program rolled out. That's pretty much what I've been working on so far this fiscal year. Other smaller improvements, YouTube streaming, I'm trying to improve that constantly, fun graphics, improvements to the, to the sound system. Those will continue to come out. I have some plans for next fiscal year, other things I would like to improve, just to keep the ball rolling, keep everything moving onward and upward, I guess. But that's, that's where we're at right now.
Fernando?
I know that redundancy is really, really important for IT and I'm wondering, I assume that we back up all of our data here locally, but do we also back it up somewhere else in the event that we're compromised?
Primary backup is cloud-based. We use, we use a program called a Cronus and it's, our, our primary backups are stored on a, on a cloud server system. I do also run local backups. Those are faster and easier to utilize, but we, we do have two separate sources of backup, one being cloud-based, one being local. I'm looking to change those next fiscal year, just to different programs that I'm more of a fan of than, than the ones that are currently used. But that's another risk factor that I, that I look at. And when we get the new server coming in, which is taking longer than I'm expecting, should be this month, but the next phase of that improvement, which will be next fiscal year, is looking for improvements to our, our data backup system. But yes, there is one in place, both locally and cloud-based.
Early?
I just have a comment. So we never had an IT department and, and we're very thankful to have one now.
Have one.
Well, we have one person in our IT department, but we have an IT department now. That's progress. And Danny's always somewhere, running around, doing something somewhere all the time.
Your department.
Yeah, I'm always at someone else's department somewhere.
Danny, I also appreciate what you do. Also, I know the, the antique stuff we had in our station and I think some of it's still there, but the upgraded phone system, the backup, all that's, the IT stuff was really a challenge in the past. And I think we've really moved some huge steps forward in the last, in the last year.
One of the things with, the police department right now is the, the most polished department when it comes to the IT. I don't believe they, I think they only have two computers that are old because they're, they're running software that I can't manage to get installed on new computers. So a lot of this software, I mean, Beth was like, yeah, I remember when this installed 10 years ago and we can't find the source to install it on the new computers. So they have a few that are still hanging around, but for the most part, we had a separate budget for the city in general to replace computers and that's been, that's been spent. But the police department also took some money out of their own budget to buy additional computers. We've upgraded the entirety of their network. We've rewired the entire police department side of the building and they have a new phone system. So they're the polished, almost finished object that I want to use as a model for the rest of the city. The phone system we bought there is expandable. It's, I mean, it's being that it's a web-based system. If I want to get more phones, I literally just have to go buy phones and apply a couple, you know, buy a couple of extra phone numbers from, you know, from a provider. Like when we go to move the city here, we're going to get off the cable, or not cable one anymore, spark light. We're essentially going to tell them they have to surrender their phone numbers to this company called Crescendo, which is the, the IP phone system we're using, and plug in some phones and they plug into our network and everything, the old PBX system that's in there is essentially just going to be unplugged once we switch over to it. It's expandable to, up to, I believe, 9,999 phones, which is more than we'll ever need. I believe, I believe at count, I think we need less than 100 for the entire city. But it's, everything I'm looking, everything I'm doing for, you know, the police department or, you know, anytime I make an improvement, I try to make sure it's an improvement that is scalable, whether, even, even if I'm just fixing one department, I make sure it's a solution that is scalable to the rest of the city so that it's not just a, a Band-Aid here, duct tape there. It's, it's an actual solution to a problem, not a, not a Band-Aid for it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Danny, the, I know that the, when you looked at the numbers and the cost of getting rid of the PBX system and going with this, this internet base, the, the ongoing costs were not that different, as I recall.
It was a slight savings. The, the initial hardware costs for the phones, the phone, the phone devices themselves do have a little bit of, little bit of a sticker shock. They're a couple hundred dollars each. But when you look at the price of what the fancy 10-line phones we have now in City Hall that are 30 years old, they were about the same price. Some of those handsets, you know, at the time may have been a hundred dollars, but this was 30 years ago and those handsets now are a couple hundred dollars. The service for the phone system is actually a savings. I believe, when I ran the numbers, I don't have, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I believe the first year alone, if we were to switch the entire city over to this, to this phone system, there would be about a $5,000 a year savings the first year in service costs.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the one thing that, when, when we brought Danny on board, there's, there's IT people who are big on client IT and then you have network and you have architect and, and programmers and things like that. Danny had his specialties in the areas where, where he's not as versed, but we moved away. Initially, we were thinking we were going with a, a network monitoring service, but in the, in, in getting up to speed and Danny getting familiar, we moved away from that and we're just adding training for, for Danny to be able to do his own network monitoring rather than, than having that service out and about. And so, so we're trying to be, we're, we're loading up the hats here, but I think he's wearing them well.
Well, Department of One, sometimes it spreads to me a little thin, but I haven't, I haven't yet come to a point where I'm, I've had to panic or anything like that, so.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, we had no idea of his multimedia talents, you know. He, as you recall, he came to me one day and said, hey, if you let me buy an iPad, I can, I can, you know, livestream the, the meetings. I'm like, okay, you know. And, and here we are with, with what I think is very much a move forward in transparency to the, the residents to have all of this documented and, and done. And then we, I don't, I don't know, I haven't looked at the count lately, but I know there's, you know, dozens and dozens of people not here that are watching at home because of Danny's work.
Yeah, but now my wife knows if I don't come straight home.
We still have e-sessions.
Long e-session.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Danny.
You guys.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate all the help.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, I will say that Danny's done a lot of work with the, the police department. The fire department is, is very self-sufficient in their IT and they have, they've always kind of managed their own thing and I don't think Danny gets that deep into it because they have, they have really pulled together their own team and they have some specialty needs that they're, they're good at. So I wouldn't want to be amiss if I didn't mention the, some of the skill sets that the, the fire department has within their, their crew. So.
Okay, item D, we're requesting to table this. Jerry Barnes is not here.
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jerry is not here and, but, but more so, so, so there's renewed discussions about the FEMA mapping. FEMA mapping is, is where people, where the, the flood plain is, both the, the flow and the, and the areas, and it affects landowners' insurance costs. We've, we've known we've had a problem with this. There's renewed interest in order to, to look to see if we can get the mapping straightened out more accurate. It would be helpful to the, the landowners in, in the City of Globe, but then we found out the county, we need the support of the county because, you know, the river doesn't start at the, the, Pendale Creek doesn't start at the border of Globe and, and it's a, a, a long project. And so we're working with the county in, in conversations with some landowners. We realized the county was moving forward with this too. So in, I don't believe we had a, a good, a good, strong presentation as to who's picking up what and when. We were taking, we want to take a little more time and talk to FEMA and get clarification on some of the, their commitments before we come back to council and talk about this. So I felt since Jerry wasn't available, we, we talked to some people who were planning on attending, letting them know that we're going to push this back. I'm hoping if we can get information out of FEMA by the 24th, we'll go then. If not, it would be the first meeting in April. But I want to make sure that, that we bring back factual information and let everybody know for sure what's possible, what's not, and the costs. So, but, and I don't, I don't know if we actually need to, a motion to table. We would just.
Presentation.
Just presentation only so we can just move along.
Okay. So we go to our consent calendar. Matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may also remove any item for separate consideration. Item A, consideration of waiver of section 2-4-10A, prior discussion ruled to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. One, accounts payable, $694,178.98. Two, consideration of approval of council minutes. A, November 7, 2019, special meeting minutes. B, November 19, 2019, meeting minutes. C, consideration of agreements and purchases of less than 25,000. And D, consideration of late February building permits. Do we have anybody from the audience, from the staff or the council that wants to remove any of these items?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass. New business. Item A, discussion and consideration to approve resolution 1808, a resolution of the City of Globe proposing an extension of the alternative expenditure limitation, Home Rule Proposition Number 406 on the ballot. I think you gave us all the information already.
Do you need to read it or?
You want to read it? Yeah, resolution, I'm sorry, 1808?
Resolution number 1808, a resolution of the mayor, and, I'm sorry, a resolution of the City, City of Globe proposing an extension of the alternative expenditure limitation. Council, please with that.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion for approval of resolution 1808.
Motion made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of resolution number 1808. Any further discussion?
Just have a point, or is it for action or is it for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you move it forward? I'm sorry. We're in new business. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. You're correct. This is to move it forward where we made that motion.
Yes.
Okay.
It's fine.
The next available meeting.
Yep. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass. Item B, discussion and consideration of resolution 1807, a resolution of support for the Hila County efforts to bring broadband fiber to all in Hila County and name District One Councilman Freddie Rios to the committee and District C Six Councilman Fernando Shipley as alternative, looking at broadband fiber.
I'm the alternative.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Last meeting, we had a very long presentation on the need to get, the need to get broadband fiber into the committee. And it's obvious that we need to get with the times and make this happen. So this resolution of support is, I believe is what council asked for. Shelley has the title to read that, tell them to make the agenda.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 1807, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Globe, Hila County, Arizona pertaining to the support of Hila County's efforts to bring broadband internet to all areas of Hila County. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
So are there any questions on this resolution of support?
I don't have any. Fernando?
Does this, now, we, we voted to bring this forward for action, but since we didn't have the language, can we do it today?
Can we waive the rule, I think?
Or was it a presentation? I think it was brought by as a presentation last time.
That would have been the first, yeah, you could call that the first, so.
Yeah, but resolution doesn't need to be read twice, so we could waive the rule.
I, I would move to waive the rule so that we can adopt resolution number 1807.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1807. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Freddie, you have something else to do?
Item C, memorandum of understanding between the Globe Fire Department and the Tri-City Fire District for a collaborative AFG grant application seeking funding for self-contained breathing apparatus. Chief Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we've reached that time again, where we're applying for funding through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. This year, the funding was released a little bit later than it has been previously, but we continue, as both Chief Reddick and I continue to have, place this item as a high priority for, for our departments. We do have, you know, we do have a little bit of time remaining as far as compliance with, with our equipment, but we want to be ahead of the game. This, this item, there's, there's two points to this item. Number one is the, the, the need to have a, a joint MOU between our agencies to share in the funding that's associated with, with the cost of this equipment that we're seeking. The other one obviously is to, to seek council approval to, to send in that application for that funding. That application is due this Friday. We're 90% of the way through that funding. We're seeking a total of $837,000 and, and change for, I believe it's 76 units that would, that we would place in service that would be a shared, those units would be shared across the board based on the number of seats on our apparatus. The total portion that we're looking at, I believe, is a total of 32 units that would, that equals a cost of $343,584 and a little bit of change. That would, that would place, you know, that would place that equipment on our truck. There's a couple of goals that we set with this program when we first started or with this project. The, the top being the safety of our personnel. Right now, we operate with two different, two different types of SCBAs and that presents some challenges. some challenges when we're on scenes. We can't, we can, we can do cross-training and potentially use their equipment. That's less than ideal. It's ideal if we have an off-duty firefighter, a reserve firefighter show up to the scene, they can go to any truck, pull an SCBA off of it, and be fully trained, fully up-to-date on the equipment that's there, on how that operates, what are the safety features, and what are some, you know, what are some failure points that they need to be aware of to really pay attention and know their equipment. It's easiest if we're all operating off the same, off the same thing, off the same type of equipment. You know, we've seen in the last, in the last couple of years, as we started working on this project, we've seen some failures of our equipment. Thankfully, you know, none that's resulted in anything significant. Most of those failures have been, been when we've, when we've been conducting compliance testing on that equipment, that we have to do every year. That equipment is, you know, it's vital, you know, although it's not, it's not something we're in every day, it's vital. When we need it, we need it, and it has to function the way it's supposed to function. And there are safety features on there that we rely on in the event that we have an emergency on a scene. The, again, this continues to be, you know, this continues to be a priority. Our matching funds for this is 5%, so we talk about, we talk about around $17,000 for our portion, our matching portion, to receive $343,000 in equipment.
Mr. Mayor?
Fernando? No, we're just applying, so there's no guarantee we'd be awarded, or is this something that's pretty...
There is no guarantee we're awarded. This is, this is a very competitive grant process. We have applied for this grant for the last three years. This will be the third year we've applied for this grant. Every year, we try, we've tried to make our application more competitive. This year, we've, we've been able to do some consulting with a, with a couple of, a couple of departments close by that have been successful with it, that are in similar circumstances. Last year, the Pine Top Timber Mesa Fire, and I believe at the time, I believe the time is White Mountain Lake, which is now part of Timber Mesa, that they applied for and were funded for this project in a very similar type fashion, multiple different, different types of equipment. You know, their, their applications, you know, we've looked at those, we reviewed them, we've consulted with Chief Morgan from Pine Top, who wrote the grant, to hopefully increase the competitiveness of what we're submitting to him. You know, every, the last two times, we've been through, we've made it through to the very end of the grant process, and they've run out of funding prior to funding ours, so we know we need to make it a little bit more competitive when it, when it comes to our application.
Charlie?
Just, my comment, just, just thank you very much for going after this, because $17,000 out of the taxpayers' pockets as opposed to 430, that's a no-brainer. Thank you.
And Chief, what's the timeframe left on our SCBAs right now? I know the last round that we were, we were awarded an AFG grant to buy those like 15 years ago, and that was around $400,000 award in that timeframe.
So, so we go through, you're familiar with this, Mayor, but the rest of the council, we go through what we call hydro-testing on all of our cylinders, every, every four to five years, to check the, to check the integrity of the cylinder. Because they're a carbon-fiber cylinder, we have to, you know, they have to be inspected. We have, we have, we're in the process right now of going through one of those inspections. There will, there will be no more inspections for that, for that equipment. Once that equipment expires, we actually have to, you know, the requirements are that we, we...
Replace it?
We replace it, but we also, we also render it inoperable. That equipment has to be rendered inoperable, where it can't be used, where it couldn't be used in an emergency situation. The rest of the equipment, we are, we're approaching, you know, typically you have about a 15-year lifespan on that equipment, per the National Fire Protection Association standards, and we're approaching it. Tri-City is closer than, closer than what we are. We did, this year, we've, we've changed how, we've changed roles a little bit. In the past years, we've, we've been the primary applicant for this funding. This year, we switched roles, and Tri-City is the primary applicant for that funding. They have, they have some equipment that's, that's aged further than what ours has. We've, Chief Ren and I have been, have been working together, you know, we haven't really changed how we've gone about it, other than, other than trying to consult a little bit more, we've just changed where names fall on the application.
And just one more question, Chief, just strictly SCBAs, or is there a compressed air system with it also for filling them? Is it an upgrade?
We have not, we have not applied for a compressed air, a compressed air system in this, in this round. The system we have currently, I feel, is, is, it's, it's operating, it's been operating very well, it's in very good condition. The only thing we may have to look at down the road with those are the cylinders, and we may need to do a cylinder replacement on our compressor system.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I request to waive the rules and approve the memorandum of understanding between the Globe Fire Department and the Tri-City Fire District for the submission of an application for the funding to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of MOU and waive the rules. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We have no action items? Wow.
We got the message.
We'll pay for it next time. Late agenda items, any late agenda items? On the call to the public, second call to the public, no?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, actually, there was one late agenda item on e-session that we did add there, and that was the sale, possible sale of leased properties. I apologize there, but we did add that, updated on Monday.
What happened to my chairs that I had to put on?
We, so, we thought it would be presumptuous to order you chairs without you actually having a chance to sit in them, so we have two on the way to try out, and if you love them, we'll buy you five more, if you hate them, you'll give them to Shelley and I.
We're going to test them.
Well, no, you guys will get to test them out, you get to flip a coin, but we will, yeah, I don't want to spend that much money on chairs and have you...
Well, I certainly hope these are not the $500-piece chairs, because I'll be voting no for that.
You can vote no.
I will.
We're over here losing wills.
Yeah, but $500 is not necessary to spend on one chair.
I will, I will say that as to the upcoming, you know, future agenda items, they will be on the agenda, and we will get a chance to test them out, and I'll leave in suspense the cost. But duly noted.
Scheduling the meetings, any scheduling, future agenda items, any other ones?
I do have one. After we have this clean-up...
Yes.
...in March, I'd like to invite Woody up here, and he has drone footage...
Oh, okay.
...after, so I'd like to have him present to the public.
A presentation, okay, yes.
I talked to him this morning, he's thinking maybe the end of April timeframe.
Okay.
Any other late items, or agenda items? None?
Where are we at with the, or is this something we need to discuss further as an agenda item? The sign, should a person be able to hang their own sign?
No, we, we are trying to, I want to try to, I have a plan.
You can share it with us?
Yes, so, I believe that it'd be probably more effective if we can get some additional updated information from the state registrar contractors as to the requirements and state law about some of, some of these requirements. I believe that this is a passionate issue for council, I believe that you have lots of questions, and I don't want to bring something forward without having the proper people here to answer. So we're trying to arrange a meeting where we can get those representatives here, and then we can have, I think, a more fruitful and positive discussion about meeting council's desires to, to make those modifications with our building code.
Can I suggest that our attorney attend that meeting?
Yes.
Because, I mean, I keep being told that it's against the law, or the law says, and I'm not, I would like to have the attorney's advice on those types of things.
Be happy to have Bill Sims come up.
Well, have him bring his law books, because I want to see it in writing. I don't want somebody, no, no, no texting, no texting. And I'm not just taking somebody's word for it, I want to see it in black and white.
Okay, no, that would be a great addition, because I don't want to be up here alone.
Do we have a motion go into executive session?
Motion made, second.
A motion and a second to go into e-session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passed. Thank you for attending.